There we go, just like clockwork. I'd like to call the regular planning commission meeting of March 9th to order. It's now 6:00 PM. Will the clerk please take a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Sage L.
Here.
Commissioner Bushnell.
Here.
And Commissioner Rubio is absent and excused.
All right. Commissioner Seals, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're to the approval agenda. Does the commission have any adjustments to tonight's meeting agenda? If the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda such as the minutes, they need to be pulled out and put under new business at this time. I'm going to make one change. We have election of offices tonight, so we elected Chair and the Co-Chair. We're going to move that to after the Committee of the Whole, towards the end of the meeting. And so we'll run through the meeting with our... Yeah. Does anybody... Getting there. Does anybody have any objections to that change or any other things in the consent agenda? Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved. Let's see. We'll move to reports. Do we have any reports from the City Deputy Administrator?
This is Glenda Ledford, Mayor. The only thing I have to report is today, the Governor... At 5:00 PM today, the Governor announced that anyone age 16 or older can get the Pfizer vaccine. And anyone age 18 or older can get any of the three, the Moderna, the Pfizer, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson. That goes into effect at 5:00 PM, or went into effect at 5:00 PM today.
Cool. Mrs. Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Bushnell here. Do you know if... I know that the local places were just had the Moderna. I know that Safelike Cars, that's what they had. Do you know if who else... If anybody else... I'm speaking for my son.
Capstone has Pfizer.
Pfizer, okay.
Yes. And you know, Capstone is in the old Sears Building.
Okay.
And they're giving shots and tests there, I believe. That's where I got my second one.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. City Public Works Director.
Yes, sir. I'd like to update you on the MPO that's coming our way, Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's federally mandated since we just went through the 2020 census. Looks like the core area here in the borough is going to be designated as urbanized, which is 50,000 population with at least 1,000 population per square mile. So we've been working on that steering committee. It's starting to ramp up pretty well. This fall, our recommendations will be going to the Governor, so it's something the Governor establishes through his powers. We're looking at the Mayor here to be on the Policy Board along with Palmer, maybe a couple borough manager and Assembly, the railroad DOT. So it's a local group that's going to be formed. Like I said, it's federally mandated. And it gives us more local control of spending federal transportation dollars in the area. And it's likely that... So we're working on establishing the Board. There'll be a technical committee that vets projects. There'll be a healthy public participation process. And the boundary's going to likely... So the boundary includes what we're projecting out for 20 years even. So... And it includes anything that's major in infrastructure. So there might not be dense populations, but our boundary is going to go out to the port. So it's going to include the port, the rail spur, and the core area here. So it'll be looking at projects, vetting projects, and getting its own pot of money to spend, whereas now that's... That happens in Juneau. That's moving forward and quickly. The borough stepped up to the plate and got a consultant onboard and got all the players in, and we've been meeting real regular on getting that going.
All right. Thank you. City Attorney, are you on the line?
I am. Michael Schwartz from Burt, Horton, Vinner, and Sherrill. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you very much. City Planner?
Michael Schwartz.
Think he'll be back. Was that on? The only thing that I want to report on is just to touch base on the Committee of the Whole. Just for anyone who's listening in and following this particular topic about the landscape discussion, this is just one of several conversations that'll be happening with the Planning Commission and staff. It'll probably be at least a two to three month or meeting process before we're ready with the final draft and put out for public hearing. So if anyone has an interest in it, and like I said, is listening in or listens to the audio later, they'll know that tonight's not the only night that there'll be conversations. Tonight's more of an introduction, and I've given you some basic information, and then we'll get more in depth as time goes by. That's all that I had.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So we have entered our public participation portion of our hearing. At this time, anyone wishing to step forward to discuss anything that is not currently on the agenda, you may do so now. And that means the permits that we're looking at, the resolution serial numbers, if you do have comments about landscaping, the Committee of the Whole items, this would be the time to express those points because you will not be able to participate in the Committee of the Whole. Yes, you can. I'll finish my...
Trail, Will's. My hearing is really poor, so I can hear you up here clear.
Okay.
Just know that.
All right. Well, let me finish my little thing or she's going to kick me. Please write your name and your contact information on the sign-up sheet. We need to know... For the microphone, make sure it's on. I think it is. I can see the red light. And you need to state your name for the record and whether or not you live in city limits. And you will have... What do we got here tonight? We'll have five minutes?
Yeah, it's all good. I can do that quickly and easily. So, Trail, our Will's. Yes, I live in the city limits. And my... I just have a couple of things I'd like to comment on. I've had a little bit of a rough ride at... With my property, but it's kind of working itself out a little bit here as we go. It's been a good education for me. Hold on here. So have you guys... We'll just... I'm going to go over a couple of things. So I have a proposal here. Have you guys seen this? All right. And so I'm going to just say it out loud real quick. So I would... It would make everything easier, and we would not have these problems if they're simply in this... I brought this up last year. It was a little bit poo-pooed, but... And this can be... The verbiage can be moved around, but "Any land or property purchases in Wassili City Limits Other Than Single Family Residential Shall Require A Signed-by-Purchaser Document Stating Understanding and Agreement To Landscape Regulations And Requirements For Their Particular Property. This document shall list requirements and must be signed before closing." That's the proposal there, and that basically says that. When I brought it up last year, it was dismissed, and there were some eye rolls. Didn't appreciate it, but I think it's a great idea. You have a couple of things that I really agree with. So this is in industrial, and this is on your... I don't know what you want to call it, but your proposal sheet. I like the idea of the grass because it makes it a lot easier than the mulch. For destination properties, I do understand if you're down on the main drag and you've got a restaurant or something, you know, there's a certain appearance the city needs to have. I get that. But if you're in a destination and you're in a back road and people aren't coming by to buy widgets, you know, they just happen to drive by, or it's a cul-de-sac or something, you know, we can limit it to the road frontage, make it attractive. But if the only person that can see the landscaping is the property owner and he's, you know, throwing out all kinds of money for it, well, that's just not very fair. It's just not. I do like a lot of the stuff I see here. I think it should also include some of these commercial properties, you know, some of these small shops that are plumber shop, electrician shop, and the employees just show up and get in their vans in the morning. There's no customers coming in, you know, it's just something to think about. I think that's fair and, you know, reasonable, you know, up off Lucas Road for, you know, wherever, or down here by the railroad tracks and, you know, back in the little industrial areas where you're not getting a lot of customers and the people aren't really driving by. Is my time up? Oh, okay. I'll leave it at that for now.
I'm going to make one comment.
You have any comment?
I'm going to make a comment for our commission members and a clarification. This public participation where you guys come up and talk is not a "we talk back." We listen, we listen, and we do things, and then we make decisions, and then an attorney looks at our decisions and tells us whether or not they're right or wrong, and we move on from there.
No, that's cool.
So just if you don't get feedback from us right now, that's why.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure how it works, so... Okay, I'm done. Good enough for now.
That way it stays civil.
What's that?
That way it stays civil in case there's a disagreement.
Yeah, we keep it civil. I'm going to stay civil.
Oh, good.
Most people are good to me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Willis.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to come up and comment at this point in time? Okay. I'm going to close the public participation portion of the hearing at this time. Able to approve the consent agenda. If there are any objections? Hearing none. It is approved as presented. Mrs. Crawford, could you please introduce item number one and provide your staff report?
Certainly. For the record, Tina Crawford, City Planner. You have two items actually on your agenda. They're related, but we'll deal with them separately just because they're different processes and they each have their own resolution. But you may want to... Guess we'll just do them separately. I think they're not that related. We'll just do a staff report for each. I do want to note a correction for the conditional use in your packet on page 11 and also on the staff report on page 93. There's a typo. This development probably wishes they could have 411,000 square feet of commercial retail, but it wouldn't fit on that property. It's supposed to be 41,700, so if you just remove one of the ones, and then when we get to adoption of the resolution, we'll need an amendment to change that from 411,000 to 41,000. So I apologize for that, but I wanted to call that out. So what you have in front of you is a conditional use request to amend a previous approval for the shops at Sun Mountain to reduce the total commercial... Retail commercial square footage that they were approved. It was originally 185,623 square feet. To reduce it by 41,700 to allow construction of a 107-room hotel on Unit H, which will be four stories, and a 3,000-square-foot bank on Unit F. The second part of this conditional use is to allow a hotel with a maximum height of 54 feet. This includes the tallest pertinence on the building, which is more of an architectural design, a skylight type of thing, but we went ahead and included the maximum height. So it'll be a total of 19 feet taller than the maximum height that's allowed by right in the code of 35 feet. This property is located basically at the northeast corner of East Sun Mountain Avenue and South Manny Drive. The total development site is 19.61 acres plus or minus. Unit H for the hotel is approximately two acres, and Unit F for the bank is approximately .78 acres. This property is owned commercial, and it's surrounded by commercial properties and has a generally commercial and business future lane use. So what you have in your package, starting on page 11, is the staff report. And what that does is that I won't belabor the background. I'll do a little bit just because we have two new commissioners, but there's more detail in the package, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or the applicant can about the history of this particular project. But again, it came through originally with a conditional use, and you have pictures of the site plan that was approved with that original approval that was handed out to you tonight, just as a reference if you wanted to see what it originally was. So it's had some changes throughout, and they're documented in there. So now we're to the phase where they're wanting to put the hotel, which will definitely be an asset to the city, and then they're asking for approval for a bank. Unfortunately, due to timing and clearing of the lot, conditional use was the best way to start this process, to get it rolling, but then it's created these continuous amendments, so you may see future amendments if they do changes outside of retail. But that's why they're back in front of you today. So you have all the criteria in your staff report that's required of every use that comes through the city, beginning on page 12. In staff's opinion, they meet all of the criteria, and therefore staff's recommending approval of the... Of each of the requested, the two requests. The code was changed prior to 2010. That's when I came onboard with the city. They amended the code on purpose to allow business owners to ask for additional height above 35 feet without having to go through the variance process because the criteria for variance is very strict. Is it the minimum necessary? Is it only for the applicant's benefit? No one could meet that threshold, whereas a conditional use looks at it case by case, site by site, and you determine whether that height works in the location that they're asking for at that time. Nothing that you do is precedent-setting. An approval today doesn't tie your hands for an approval the next time. You look at each one on a case-by-case basis and how it fits in with that area. So based on the topography of this land, the way it's set back from the highway and the continual rise, the four feet doesn't appear to create any kind of large obstructions or, you know, something that sticks out like a sore thumb in the city. Additionally, changing... Reducing the commercial to allow a hotel in our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2010, there was a recognized need for additional hotel rooms in the area through a market study. We also hear it from people who live here that we need more hotel rooms for different events. So clearly, there's a need for a hotel, and so this was determined consistent with our comprehensive plan and the land development code. So if you... You also have in your packet, you have zoning maps after the staff report, aerial drawings. You have all of the drawings the applicant submitted that shows you details. You have the renderings for the hotel. All of those were determined to be consistent with the master plan that they submitted originally. But you have all of those renderings, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and the applicants here also.
Commissioner Bushnell here. Ms. Crawford, could you please go through the recommended conditional...
The conditions, please?
Because I did have some questions on those, how they're written.
Okay. So I appreciate that normally. I do read those into the record. The first condition is a standard one. It states that the hotel and credit union must be constructed consistent with the site plan and elevations attached to this resolution. Any proposed changes have to be submitted to the City Planner for review and approval. Substantial modific... And I'm just a little bit ad-libbing here. Substantial modifications will have to come back to the Planning Commission for review and approval because, again, it could have an impact. Otherwise, minor ones could be approved at that time. Also, it talks about if they do any substantial changes, they could trigger additional improvements to address traffic impacts or anything like that. So the approval, the TIA that was approved as part of this, addresses this hotel, the bank, and the existing uses, and the proposed retail that's remaining. So if they do a different mix that draws different calculations or whatever, they would have to revise that transportation impact analysis, what we call a TIA. The second one is all other future development must be consistent with the site plan and approval as part of their original approval and their amendments that they've had. So basically stating that everything else that they've had in their previous resolutions are still in effect unless it was changed in this approval. Oh, well, that's actually the next one. The fourth one is that Duane Drive, which is actually the east-west driveway through this development, it's not an actual street, but it's labeled for EMS purposes, must be operational to city standards with walking routes before full build-out of the development.
Mrs. Crawford, this is... Commissioner Bushnell, that's where I have a question. Can you define full build-out of the development?
That would be the approved 185,623 square feet that they were originally approved, which is now being reduced and was reduced by the gas station. So when you put all of those together, what we have is... I'm not sure if it's in the package.
I didn't see it.
About the total retail that's remaining. I believe it is, actually.
Is it?
It's on your site plans in the table on... It's on page... Oh, these are those ones that get tiny. 22, one of your 11-by-17 pullout sheets. You have a table that breaks down the existing uses. I can research it, or I know the applicant can for sure talk about that. But again, we started with the number 185,623. We did a reduction to allow the gas station to go in, and I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but I can get that for you. And then we're now reducing it by another 41,700. So they have a balance of retail that's left to them. You can actually, if you can see it, 10, 25, 50, 62,5 is what it looks like is remaining in retail.
Okay.
So as long as they don't exceed 62,500 in retail, they won't have to amend the TIA.
That's not the question I was asking. My... The question I was asking is Duane...
Full build-out.
Okay. So it says that the city standards of walking routes before full... Before... Okay. So before they complete the final building?
Yes.
It has to be done?
Yes.
So at point, as long as they're not point... As long as they're .5% from completion, we're good then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, just by the time that they complete that last 62,000 square feet, they have to make sure that they have all of that in place.
Okay.
And then the left and right turn lanes.
Can I ask one more question? When you say completion of the retail aspect of it, does that mean completion of the building or tenant improvements?
No, that would be construction of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Once the building is constructed, they need to have everything in place. And then the second part of number four is that left and right turn lanes at the stop sign must be provided with a side street construction. That is where that Duane Drive ties into Manny. The fifth condition is that Manny Drive must be fully operational to city standards with walking routes at the same time that the Herman Road Extension Project is completed. That land use permits must be submitted separately for the hotel and bank prior to construction.
Can we back up for a second?
Sure.
That was the other question I had. So I was reading through the TIA or some of the recaps from the traffic analysis, and here it says Manny Drive must be fully operational. So this is part of this permit. Who's responsible for making Manny that? Because there was some different... DOT was saying, well, you know, it's the city's street, or it could be the landowner's responsibility. But where is that spelled out? And how is that spelled out for this? Because here, it's kind of... It says it has to be done, but is the developer doing it? Is that in their agreement?
Well, it would be the developer's requirement. That's part of the TIA identifying what...
Okay. I'm just making sure because it kind of said in there it could be city or developer.
I can let Archie speak to it a little more.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that this is all clear on the record of each one of these little points.
Yes, that's correct. And being that's not directly tied to the Parks Highway, DOT can't require it. So if... So the city's making a requirement of the developer.
Okay, because they put it back on the city or the developer. It said...
It's a recommendation they see as needed for the area.
Okay. So this statement is sufficient to make that happen? Or is there something else, somewhere else, that I did not see that makes that happen?
Well, it's under conditions of approval.
Yeah, it's a condition of approval, so it's something that I have to comply with.
Okay. It just... There's just... There's a what? There's not a how or a who, and that's why I was clarifying.
I would have to double-check.
Okay.
The TIA is like this thick.
Can we ask the attorney about this, too?
It's how our document's written, not the TIA.
Is it?
It's recommendations out of the TIA that the city has to deal with or should deal with to serve the area, and so we're putting those on the developer.
Okay. So that's the assumption of this phrase is that it is the developer's responsibility? Okay.
They're creating the traffic.
And that's how I read the condition of approval.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Not yet. But you know where... Why I was asking. Good. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. And you're... Now you can keep going.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll quickly go through. So six just states that they also have to submit administrative approval permits that have site plans, landscape plans that show consistency with this before they start construction. Any signage on the site... A lot of these are standard conditions. Has to be reviewed and approved by planning. A separate landscape guarantee has to be provided to the city prior to the commencement of construction for the hotel, for their interior landscaping. And then at the end, an as-built survey has to be submitted to the Planning Department.
All right. Do any of the commission members have members for Ms. Crawford?
Yes, I have a question. Commissioner Sage L. So you mentioned there's a limit of 35 feet for buildings. What was the purpose of that?
To be honest, it was before my time that code was adopted in '96. But typically, codes have a maximum height, and that's just to create light and air so that you don't get the shadowing until you've done studies. So if you were in New York or Chicago, in addition to heights, they will also have things that talks about allowing daylight to come in and that overshadowing of one building next to another and tiering the buildings and things like that so you don't get that canyon effect. Ours just went with that. It's pretty much a standard for most communities. It's 35, and then they allow exceptions based on what makes sense for them.
Okay. I was just curious.
So that's all that I have.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Then, without further ado, would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Hans Hill. I'm with the Boote Company, representing the applicant, Tim Alley, who is absent this evening.
I am on the phone, though. This is Tim Alley with the Boote Company as well.
Very good.
Perfect. So the City Planner has done an excellent job of compiling our documents and listing the conditions of approval as well as summarizing what we believe to be accurate facts of this development. The conditions of approval, for the most part, we agree with. I would bring up, though, as you... Sorry. Commissioner Bushnell, my apologies. What we're bringing to everyone's attention was the Manny Drive condition of approval. The reason I bring this up is while the TIA does bring this to everyone's attention, that it is something that DOT would like to see improved upon, I think the specifics to which the developer would be required to upgrade this road would be quite important to include with this condition of approval. They mention walking pathways and curb and gutter and things of that nature, and I think it's important to address the specifics that we'd be required to improve upon. It's just one issue that I see with that. Otherwise, we have no objection to the conditions of approval.
I'd like to add that the City Planner, Tim Alley with the Boote Company, that Tina, the City Planner, had mentioned that the CUP that we're currently looking at and then also the variance request are kind of two separate situations. They are very closely tied together in that the hotel in particular has very stringent variance standard guidelines, and so approval of the conditional use permit and denial of the variance would... Could impact that development and that the Home Two Suites at that point might... May pull out due to the limitations that would be put by not having that variance request approved. But other than that, we are excited to bring this to the city. Home Two Suites is a nice, you know, extended stay. But other than that, we are excited to bring this to the city. Home Two Suites is a nice, you know, extended stay type of a hotel. They are proposing to have, they reduce the key count in order to provide some meeting space in that hotel. They also will be providing a pool as well as a bar in the lobby, which is typically, the pools typically are in the Home Two Suites, but the bar is not, which that will be part of this approval. And that, the small bar that'll be in the lobby is particularly important because the city is currently over their, you know, a limited approval, approved amount of licenses for that type of thing. So being that the hotel is automatically gets one, it will help the site in future, possible future development to propose, you know, different types of restaurants and/or just other types of development. I would like to add that, you know, being that this development, the match plan started in two thousand seventeen, a lot of things changed since then. One being the, you know, obviously COVID, but it's definitely driven things towards online purchases and whatnot. And that's, it becomes really important to have that bank approved on here as well. It diversifies the site and makes it a little bit more profitable for the developer and brings in a lot, a lot more people into the site that might utilize some of the restaurants and/or retail establishments that'll be, be constructed in the area.
And this is Hans Hill with the Boote Company again. Tim brings up a great point in that when the original CUP application was put together, the developer comes with an idea of what they'd like to bring to the valley. Now, who shows up to the plate to actually become a tenant is obviously up in the air, and they have ideas on that. But that's why this is evolving year after year, as far as who's interested in becoming a part of this establishment. So I understand a few of you haven't been privy to the background on this, so I bring that up now.
All right. We're not going to ask any questions right at the moment, because we're going to open up for public comment first. If anybody wants just to step forward, if you're done with your initial presentation, and after the public comment, we'll bring you back up. You'll receive another few minutes, and then we may have some questions. Thank you very much. The public comment portion for, of the public hearing is now open for conditional use permit twenty-one dash zero one. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? You have five minutes to provide your comments. Since there's nobody in the audience, is there anybody online that wishes to speak to this? Okay, so there's nobody online. All right. So we'll bring the applicant back up if there's anything else, and we'll see if the, any of the commission members have any questions. So there were no comments from the public, so I assume there's nothing to respond to. Was there anything else that you wanted to present to us before I ask the commissioners if they have any questions?
This is Tim Alley. I guess I'd like a little bit of a clarification on one of the conditions in the CUP. Not being that the bank is intended to be a New Vision credit, a credit union, which New Vision has recently purchased the Alley. And one of the things that will, that we, that has transpired since we put in the application is that they hired a new architect that will be utilizing some more modern design features. They'll still match in with the overall development as required. We don't, we don't have any problem with that and definitely want it to. We want to have a good, you know, connected feel across the development. But I just wanted to make sure that those, any updated elevations, finishes on the exterior of the building, that can be approved by, by the city planner.
It was Mr. Allen, correct?
Alley?
Alley, sorry.
Tim Alley, yeah.
Yeah, the way the conditional use, the way this whole thing works is we're going to approve it as it's written and as it's presented to us. And, and it says in there that any changes of any type, no matter how significant, would have to come back to the planner. If she deems that it is a significant change, it would have to come back to us at that point in time. So just be aware of that.
Yep, okay. Yep, no problem.
Hans Hill with TBC. Just to clarify, so the CUP says substantial changes, that's the conditions of approval. And the definition of substantial changes would be in the eye of the city planner, correct?
That would be correct. I think an architectural change might, might kind of trip that, though.
Understood.
Okay. All right. Commission members, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions.
No?
No?
It's time.
Okay. I did have a question that I wrote down, and it was a question about the liquor license that you spoke about for the hotel. There was, you, you, your phrase was that they was going to get it. Is there a, were they, do you know something we don't? Mr. Allen?
As far, I'm sorry, this is Tim Alley. As far as, I guess, what are you, what are you asking?
I just know that getting a full-blown liquor license into the city right now is very hard to come by with this current.
Yes, so, so my understanding is that as, with the development of a hotel, you are automatically granted a liquor license for that hotel.
Oh, okay. I heard the guarantee. That's why I wanted you to expand, because I was like, okay.
Mr. Chair, I would say guarantee is probably a strong word, but he is correct that it's not in the same pool as restaurants and bars. There is a separate provision. If you have over a certain number of rooms in a hotel, you could even have up to a restaurant with a liquor license, I believe. But there are some provisions to allow that, that are separate. But you're correct.
Okay, okay.
Package stores, restaurants, and bars, we are out of those licenses.
Yeah, okay. That's, all right. Thank you for the clarification. That's, that's why I had the question. All right. Then we don't think we have any other questions. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if you would indulge, I would like to have a five-minute recess to talk to Mr. Giddings about the question that was raised by the applicant about the conditional Manny Drive, and then hopefully bring you back some clarifying language.
Sure. Commission is going to take a recess at six-thirty-eight for five minutes. All right, we're going to come back into, out of recess at six-forty-one. And a question for the planner? Is there?
We do have a, Mr. Chair, we have some language for you.
Okay.
So obviously, you'll be doing some question and answer, but for number, condition number five that reads Manny Drive must be fully operational to city standards with walking routes at the time that Herman Road Extension is completed. It, what it should read is must be paved to city standards. The unpaved portion along the northern, there's only one unpaved portion to city standards.
Right.
And will strike the with walking routes. The, when the develop, those two lots on the north side are developed, they'll have to put those sidewalk connections in at that time.
Okay.
So it's just paving that.
So, so we will need to do an amendment if we want to move forward with this. The amendment would be Manly Drive must be paved to city standards at the same time Herman Road Extension road project is completed.
Exactly. And the applicant indicated that that was reasonable. They couldn't speak to that too.
At the same time or by the time the Herman Road Extension is completed?
By the time.
By the time. That's what I thought. Okay. All right. So Commissioners, at this point in time, I need a.
Do you want to do, do you have any more Q and A?
No, we're done. Sure. If you'd like to come up and invoice that, that would be fine.
Thank you, Commissioners. Hans Hill, TBC. We agree with the proposed amendment to the conditions of approval. And we'll see to it.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. If one of the Commissioners would like to make a motion, we'll need to read the resolution serial number, the top portion of it in full for the record.
David Seals, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution ser-
To approve.
To approve.
Then we'll amend it.
To approve the resolution serial number twenty-one oh one.
And read the body of.
Resolution of the Wassila Planning Commission approving conditional use permit number twenty-one oh one to amend conditional use number eighteen oh one and conditional use permit nineteen oh one to allow construction of a, of a one-hundred-and-seven-room hotel and bank that will replace the forty-one thousand seven hundred square feet.
Go ahead and read the original number.
Four-hundred-and-eleven thousand seven hundred square feet of the approved retail square footage for the development. And the approved, and approve a height exemption to allow a four-story hotel with a maximum height of fifty-four feet, which is nineteen feet taller than the allowed maximum of thirty-five feet in Wassila Municipal Code sixteen dot twenty-four dot oh-three oh A six, located at the Shops at Sun Mountain Phase Two condo plat, unit H, previously lots one through six, Sun Mountain subdivision.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Sejel, I second.
Okay. Resolution serial number twenty-one dash zero one has been motioned for approval and seconded. Now we'll go into discussion. But before we do, I'd like to make two amendments. We'll handle them one at a time. The first amendment is I'd like to change the, the square footage of four-hundred-and-eleven thousand seven hundred square feet to forty-one thousand seven hundred square feet. So I move, move to amend this motion.
I second.
Okay, so I have a second. Any, any comments or objections to the motion? Hearing none, it is approved. I have a second amendment to the motion, and that is to change item number five as a condition of approval, and I'm going to change it to read Manny Drive must be paved to city standards by the same time the road extend, Herman Road Extension project is completed.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to the amendment. Is there any discussion, questions? Is there anybody opposed? Hearing none, the second amendment is approved. So now we're to the main motion with two amendments. And so let's talk about it. Any, any questions, concerns?
No.
No?
None.
Okay. Then I'm going to take a vote, call for the vote. Could the clerk please take a roll call vote for us?
Commissioner Seals?
I vote, I vote to accept this.
Commissioner Sejel?
I vote to approve.
Commissioner Bushnell?
To approve. Wassila Planning Commission has approved resolution serial number twenty-one dash zero one as amended. A resolution of the Wassila Planning Commission approving conditional use permit number twenty-one dash zero one to amend conditional use eighteen dash zero one and conditional use permit nineteen oh one to allow the construction of a one-hundred-and-seven-room hotel and bank that will replace the forty-one thousand seven hundred square feet of approved retail, will replace, yes, the forty-one seven hundred square feet of approved retail square footage for the development and approve a height exception to allow a four-story hotel with a maximum height of fifty-four feet, which is nineteen feet taller than the allowed maximum of thirty-five feet in Wassila Municipal Code sixteen dot two-four dot zero-three-zero A six, located at the Shops at Sun Mountain Phase Two condo plat, unit H, previously lots one through six, Sun Mountain subdivision. Ms. Crawford, would you like to introduce item number two?
Yes. Again, for the record, Tina Crawford, city planner. The item in front of you now is variance twenty-one dash zero one with the associated resolution twenty-one dash zero two. The applicant is Tim Alley with the Boote Company. The owner is Sun Mountain Development Group LLC. The request is for three variances to the maximum height of thirty feet for wall signage. There's a request to be allowed to be, have maximum height of fifty-one point five feet for a wall sign on the west-facing wall. A request for a forty-eight-foot-high wall sign on the south-facing or the side-facing Parks Highway. And a request for a forty-eight-foot-high wall sign on the east-facing wall. Initially, when this variance was submitted, there was a request to grant a variance to the parking standard for the hotel. However, this is a condominium plat. This is not a platted subdivision, so parking is addressed as a whole. There were some concerns by the, the hotel agents regarding that. So a note was added to that conditional use. I know I didn't bring it up at the time, but it was really a non-issue. It was more to satisfy them for lease purposes and, and things like that. So I removed that out of that, although we initially advertised it's no longer in front of you for discussion. Again, this is for the hotel that's located on track eight or unit H within that condominium plat. plat. Within your package, beginning on 123, you have the staff report, which goes through all of the variance criteria that you're required to address in order to determine whether you can approve a variance. The Planning Commission must determine that all the criteria are met in order to approve it. Staff's findings indicate that all the criteria have been met, and so therefore, staff is recommending approval of the variances. I will note one thing in my staff report on page 126, criteria four. I duplicated the finding for four and five. It doesn't really matter for this commission because the resolution is correct and has the correct finding in it. But if you read one and saw the difference, I wanted you to understand why. The, the resolution is correct. It has the correct finding in it. So, just to provide a little bit, you have in your package the drawings, the rendering, showing the signage and things like that. And I'll just provide you a little background about variances and things like that. When the city amended the height provisions, they didn't talk about the signage provisions. But the code does allow provision to request a variance for height. And as it's laid out in this particular package, this property is setback by a frontage road, plus it's also on the rear of the lot, and it's at an elevation at such a point that it makes the visual line of sight for signage at a ground level or up to the 30 feet that's allowed to be less visible. Although, there may be some smaller signage, the sites limited and pre-standing signs at the road, there may be some. This will allow people to have sufficient time to recognize where the hotel is and to get into the right-hand lane and make a turn. So, it's for a safety issue. It's not just a convenience. However, it is also typical for hotels to have their signage up near the top. So, it's not an unreasonable request for a hotel. This is just one of the, the first taller hotels that we've had that, that had to ask for this particular variance. So, that's kind of in a nutshell why staff didn't see it as an issue and is recommending approval of the three variances. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do any of the commission members have any questions for the planner?
I have none.
I have no questions at this time.
All right. No questions, then let's have the applicant come forward if you have anything to share with us.
Thank you once again, Hans Hill with TBC. I would just like to point out, including in your packet is pictures of the Anchorage location for Home 2 Suites. Signage will be consistent with that. These are corporate trademarks, and they have very standardized sizes and positions that these occur on their buildings, and they are recognized throughout the country for that point. That's why the request is being made at this time. Appreciate it.
All right. At this point in time, we'll open this up to public test, public comment. Did anybody sign up online? Okay. Nobody signed up online. There's no, nobody in the audience to comment, so I'm going to close the public comment portion. Does the applicant have anything else to share with us?
I'll just ask if Mr. Alley has any comments at this time?
This is Tim Alley of the Boote Company. I have nothing further. I think we've covered it all.
All right, thank you. Do any of the commission members have any questions for the applicants?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this point in time, I'd enter a motion on whether to approve or disapprove this resolution.
I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Can you please state your name?
David Seals. Wasilla Planning Collusion Commission Resolution Serial Number 2102. A resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission approving three variances. Variance number V2101 to the maximum height of 30 feet for a wall sign to allow a 51.5 foot height for a wall sign on the west-facing wall, a 48-foot-high for a wall sign on the south-facing wall front, and a 48-foot height for a wall sign on the east-facing wall on a hotel located at the Shops at Sun Mountain Phase 1 condo plat, previously lots 1 through 6, Sun Mountain subdivision.
A second motion.
That was Commissioner-
Commissioner Seale, second motion.
Thank you, sir. All right. We have a, a motion that has been presented and seconded. Any comments, discussion?
No.
No? Okay. This'll probably be the easiest sign variance there is because usually, these are really contentious, and there's people speaking on both sides about whether they want it or not want it. I, I think this is a, a pretty straightforward ask, so I'm going to take a roll call vote on the motion. Grab the clerk.
Commissioner Seals, I approve.
Commissioner Seale?
Commissioner Seale, I approve.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Commissioner Bushnell, I approve. The Wasilla Planning Commission approves resolution serial number 21 dash 02. A resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission approving three variances. Variance number V21 dash 1 to the maximum height of 30 feet for a wall sign to allow a 51.5 foot height for the wall sign on the west-facing wall, a 48, 48-foot height on the wall sign on the south-facing wall front, and a 48-foot height on the wall sign on the east-facing wall on the hotel located at the Shops at Sun Mountain Phase 1 condo plat, previously lots 1 through 6, Sun Mountain subdivision. All right. Well, that concludes our resolutions for the night, and I thank everybody that has come. So, now, we will enter into committee of the whole. Commissioners, I need a, a motion from one of you to enter into committee of the whole.
I make a motion, this is Commissioner Seals, to enter into committee of the whole.
Commissioner Seale, second.
All right. Do I hear any objections? Hearing none, we enter committee of the whole at 6:57.
Tim Alley.
Hans Hill.
Mrs. Crawford, would you like to take over from here?
Certainly. For the record, Tina Crawford, City Planner. The, the conversation tonight is focused on the landscaping chapter in the city code. As Commissioner Bushnell is aware, we amended the, can you hear me?
I'm not sure if you're coming through the speaker. You'll, a little closer. There you go.
I have to lure my chair. Okay, there. How about that? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. All right. So, the item for discussion is the landscape regulations. As I said, as Commissioner Bushnell knows, we amended the code back in February of 2017, did a substantial rewrite, did some major changes. Obviously, knowing at that time that it would need to be tested, and we would identify any kind of issues and come back and address them if it started creating issues or things didn't seem to make sense. And so, what you have in your package tonight, the intent is not so much to have the conversation tonight, especially since Commissioner Rubio is not there, but I at least I wanted to get you started with some reading material and frame the conversation, and then we'll, we'll jump into it with both feet at the next meeting. In your package, starting on page 169, you have the actual adopted landscaping regulations. So, that's them in their entirety. Beginning on page 193, you have some comments from staff, and then beginning on 195, you have comments from a landscaping company that was, that was willing to provide their time and effort to forward some comments that they've, about issues they've had with their clients. So, the first issue that had came to light has to do with the industrial lights, and that's what Mr. Wills brought up a little bit tonight during the public comment section, was that we do have some industrial properties that are basically interior of what you would commonly call them the Lower 48 and Industrial Park. They don't front on the Parks Highway. They don't front on Lucas or Mystery or anything like that. It's a subdivision that was created with an interior road off of one of these collector-type roads.
You said there's some comments from a landscaper and stuff in here?
Yes.
Because I never saw it when I went through.
It is on page 195 through-
Oh, that was those last three pages.
Yes.
Okay. I did read, okay.
A little bitty, no pictures.
Okay. I read it.
So, so we have, we don't have a lot of industrial landscaping within the city, but we do have some. There's a, a pocket off Mystery, just off Lucas on the west side of Lucas. Then, on the north and the south side of Mystery, there's some industrial there. The city's parks and thus, the, the sewer plant is industrial, and then we have industrial at the airport. So, there's really not a lot that we're looking at anyway, so the changes that you make, although they will affect any rezones in the future. Oh, and then we have off Centaur. It was recently rezoned.
I was going to say, I thought we had something over there.
Yeah. On the south side of the Parks Highway along Centaur and, can't think of the other name of the road. Those lots that have been industrial forever were-
The FW area.
Yeah. They were finally rezoned. So, what, some of the conversations came up, and that's what Mr. Wills was saying. When you're interior and you're not visible from these main roads that most people are connecting through town on, should you have to have the same level of landscaping requirements as someone who fronts on Mystery, for example, or Lucas Road? His comment was talking about a destination. Those businesses are destinations. You're going there because you need them to weld something for you, or because you need the, you know, them to, to do a job for you. It's not something that you're normally just driving past and seeing. So, that was one of the issues that, that he had raised, and so, in talking at it, at it in-house, we agreed that maybe they should not be quite as stringent as, you know, are in the code. There might be some provisions. So, on page 193 is absolutely just a first quick draft. I don't want you to put any kind of reliance on this is what the end product will be, but it was just my quick stab at trying to identify some industrial landscaping requirements for properties that are on major roadways versus properties that are on those local interior roads. And like I said, we'll get into it in, in more detail. I think one of the things that I noticed that's actually deficient for the industrial lots is a requirement to screen their outdoor storage. So, I think it would be good to do that, and if they're going to screen it, then what's the point of putting a whole lot of formal landscaping that you would see at a Target or something like that where it's open and you're seeing the parking lot? A lot of that's to screen and buffer that asphalt. But if you already have an offense, could it be just an addition of street trees, maybe some shrubs? Because right now, you're required to have trees, shrubs, perennial flowers, mulch, boulders, and decorative fencing. That's just the standard across the board regardless of what type of use you are or where you're located. And so, that's the, the conversation that was brought to the city's attention. So, so we're going to open that for conversation. And then, the page 195, I've spent, had a couple of meetings with Corvus Design. Like I said, they were, they were kind enough to share the concerns that they had raised during their plans review for their clients. Some of them staff supports and thinks they make total sense. There's a couple that are, I'll just say, in particular, one of them says, you should allow 18 inches instead of 24 inches for shrubs. And I'm like, and they're like, but it costs more. And I'm like, well, the fact that it costs isn't necessarily the deciding factor. It's an 18-foot shrub that takes three years to grow is going to take forever to get to any kind of size. And so, we just have to determine, are we willing to wait five years before the bush to look like anything, or do we want it to look like something sooner? And so, the code was written to force it into more sooner. Two feet still really not a tall shrub, but I can tell you, Taher and I have both done landscape inspections, and oftentimes, 18 inches is not the, the cutoff. We're dealing with six inches is what they plant in the ground. So, I'm not sure that 18 really is going to make a difference because whoever's installing this landscaping is installing six-foot-high shrubs anyway, or eight-foot.
Six-inch high?
Yeah. Six-inch, yeah. Sorry, not six-foot. So, but it's something to discuss. So, I think they had some good points about, we originally had it in our landscape conversation about requiring the landscape architect who drew the plan to actually go at the end of the landscaping installation, do the inspection, do the counts, and certify that it actually was installed and planted according to their plans. Because they're the architect. They're the ones who seal their drawings. They understand what kind of soils. When they say you need four inches of, of topsoil, they know how to measure for it. We don't know how to measure for it. I can tell you that I have seen some sites, which I won't name, that just churned up that hardpan and planted their flowers and shrubs in it. You can see the rocks and the clay-looking material coming out of it through the grass, and it's like, you're going to have to replant that because it's not going to do well. But I don't have the expertise to do that. So, we're going to put that back on the landscape architect as one of the suggestions, and in fact, they embrace that idea. Let us go out and do that inspection and work with the landscape installer because they want their client to get the work that they actually paid for. And then, they certify it to us, and then we can ground-truth it if we feel that it's needed. So, there's some, some, some changes there. So, if you're aware of anything that's come to your mind, this is one of the convers, one of the topics that you are allowed to talk to members of the public, your friends, your neighbors, business owners.
Oh, we're actually allowed to talk about this?
Yes.
Because I get an earful all the time, and I just tune them out.
No. This, because this is a legislative change. It is not quasi-judicial, and it's, has to do with code change and policy. You're certainly willing to-
For, for the record, I'm dealing with a landscaping issue right now from 1964.
Oh.
Yeah. So, and, and we're trying to work through it, and one of the things that I, I was reading, I read through all, all of this information, and I found something I actually liked in the landscaping plan that I thought was actually good, if I can find it. There it is. And it was under the submittals because I, I understood that you must be prepared and sealed by a landscape architect who's registered in the state of Alaska, or a professional with similar landscaping expertise as approved by the city planner. And I like that, to be left that way, because I know, I know it's been told to people that, oh, you have to go to a good architect. But the landscape architects around here, if they see with City Wasilla, it's a double bill. They, they charge more. I mean, for what we're trying to do for, for my client, it, it's just astronomical what they're charging. So, there has to be, and architects in this, around here, charge a lot of money. And, and some of them are, are fair, and, and some of them are, are, are very proud of, of what they're providing. So, there's, there's a lot of different scales, but, but then you have people, some, some of these architect companies, or not architect, landscape companies, that actually understand our soils and, and probably know it better than the architect, architect landscaper. And so, I think that, I mean, that was, that would be, I, I, what I see in here is approved by the planner, maybe some-
Criteria or something.
Yeah. Some criteria of, so that somebody can't just say, hey, my Uncle Joe planted his lawn, why can't we use him? And so, that you don't end up in the dis, you're not the one that is being scraped over the barrel because you're saying, no, you're not qualified, and, and his family thinks he's qualified, so we just, we don't need that kind of argument.
Yeah. So, all of those, that's, that's a great recommendation. In fact, it's been one of mine to say, to be honest, I haven't seen that much improvement between the landscape plans for, by just an architect versus a landscape architect. I think the inspection piece, that might be where the difference is. But over the three years, three to four years since we adopted that code, or the city adopted that code, I still struggle and have, have a lot of issues with getting them drawn right and the information on there, and they don't seem to look necessarily any better on the end. So, it may be that, that you want to take away that requirement altogether. It didn't used to be in there. That was a new requirement as part of 2017.
Trying to get something more professional.
Right. But if it's so cost prohibitive, maybe that's not the way to go. So, those, anything in this chapter should be looked at and reevaluated.
I don't know what it's going to cost for the project that I'm working on over here across from Matsui Central, but the initial phrase from the, the landscape architect was like over $15,000 just to come up with the plans because he said, I'm going to have to go back and forth a bunch. And, and that was, just seemed like a lot of money for something like that. And that, that's why I'd like to see the alternative, to be able to use a landscape, somebody like Matsui Landscaping that does professional landscape development or similar type businesses.
We would just have to make sure there's that accountability at the end, that, that, you know, that it's installed properly and that there's some kind of certification that they do.
When I first, just so you, the other commission members know, when I first got on this committee, one of the things that we discussed was on building requirements because we were dealing with variances from 1964, when somebody built a house too close to a lot line, and it got sold over the years, and then finally, somebody realized it, and, they had to do something about it, and it was the 16th owner. And so, we're- And so we're, as a planning commission, when they come in front of us and we're almost forced to approve it because this house has been there forever and it just is what it is. Um, that's not a really good excuse. Um, so one of the things that I learned from land development in Eagle River was the developer there required the builder to do a as-built inspection. So, or a foundation inspection. So when that foundation was about to be poured, they had to have an inspection and a new as-built showing where that footer was gonna go. And then it was done. They did a second inspection to make sure that it was actually where it was supposed to be. And, and we only had, out of 100 to 200 lots, I think there was two, no, there was one that was built too close to the street. And that turned out to be the one unlicensed builder that slipped through and we didn't know he was unlicensed. So, but at that point in time, nobody really wanted to go to an as-built at the end. Um, especially the builders, they felt it was, uh, uh, onerous to be able to prove that they'd done it right. But that's how builders typically, especially residential builders, have a tendency to think. And, and I know commercial builders do it, sometimes do it too. I mean, I'm, I'm dealing with that right now. People, people build around here and they think that they have no rules, and then they find out, "Oh, we do. We do have rules, especially for commercial." And that's where they think it's the, kind of the Wild West out here, and it's far from it.
Well, I will say, that's all that I intended to, to share tonight, just kinda to give you some background as to why we're looking at it when we did the last code. If you, if it would be helpful for you, I can get you the copy of the code prior to this one. Um, if you're, if you're that kind of person who wants to compare, do comparisons and then go forward. But it's, it's something that we do have. But, um, like I said, I don't think there are a lot of major changes, but I think we, it definitely warrants a look at again to, to address. Like I said, some of these things were newer and they, they were significant changes. But we also made a significant change to the amount of land that they were allowed to clear. Previously, they couldn't clear cut. They had to retain 30% of natural vegetation, which was hard to do and develop a site. And we changed the requirement to you can clear cut it all and only put back 15%. So there was, there was a give and take there, but it certainly deserves another bit.
So a couple clarifying questions so that everybody underst, so we know where we're going with this. One of the things that I was looking at was the landscaping requirements for surface parking areas. So you're required to have 15% landscaping. But it can't, it does go up depending on site and things, that there may, may be higher requirements than the 15%, because once you get into snow, um, melting areas and interior landscaping, that percentage can go up, correct? Or is it still maximum 15%?
Well, you can put as much as you want.
I understand.
All, the maximum that you have to do, which includes all of your types of landscaping, is 15% for the lot area.
And that's what I wanted to clarify. And, and one of the things that I was, um, because one of the things I was wondering about is with the parking spaces. Because, so the bigger the parking lot, and that's an incurred cost, more, more pavement is gonna be more, more cost for these developments, and we want more developments. We want nicer ones. But we're increasing the amount of interior landscaping to break up these parking lots as we go. So, um, so, but only if zero to four, we only need 5% of landscaping of the parking lot area. So does that, is that gonna, so if I did 15% around the perimeter of my property, I don't need to do any interior landscaping, or that just decreases from what I need to do in the other areas?
Well, around the perimeter wouldn't equal 15%. You would have to have some interior to, to hit the 15%. Regardless of the size of the lot, the math just doesn't work out with that 10-foot bed.
Okay.
Um, so I haven't seen anybody that's been forced into more than 15%.
Okay.
They may have chosen to do more than 15%, but the 15% would have addressed all the criteria and those provisions, that sliding scale of what you need based on your parking. And again, that's a bit, it's a multi-pronged thing. It's a visual thing. There's nothing more attractive than a sea of black asphalt with nothing breaking it up. Two, not so much here of an issue, but it does create, um, you know, you have to have more snow storage and you have drainage and runoff and things like that. Um, you also have, you know, there's the climate change. It reflects the heat back up and it, it creates bad things for the planet. There's, and there's probably a dozen other things that I could get you some more information on.
Okay.
But just having that large slab of asphalt, the main thing is it's not aesthetically pleasing. And for quality of life, it's just-
I, I understand that. I'm, I was looking at also development cost. That's why I asked the question, the clarification, because, you know, once you go over 21 parking spaces, you need to make sure you have 15% of your landscaping in that interior area, in those interior areas.
And that's one of the clarifications that Corvus was asking for, and I agree with that, is we're not talking all the drive aisle, the exterior drive aisles that go around or the driveways in. We're only talking the actual footprint of the parking spaces and their interior drive aisles. So that's one of the things they said that should clarify. So you're really only dealing with the space. And it only seemed reasonable to be proportionate based on that visual impact that you create. So if you're a small lot with a few spaces, why should you have to do it every three or four spaces? That same ratio of landscape aisles. It's when you get the larger ones, that's when you really want that impact. But you also still, a row of 10 just doesn't look as nice if you don't put a landscape island on the end of each one. So that's, that's where the scale, now the numbers can certainly be adjusted. Now, we could do some, you know, drawings to give you some examples of what that looks like and go down that path. Um, but it was intended to be proportionate to the impact that they're creating.
I have a question. How close, how close is our landscape plan to the boroughs or?
The borough doesn't have one. They don't have any requirements.
So that would be my concern, is if we make it too erroneous. Right now, the city has only so much land. So if we make it too erroneous and too costly for a business, they would just probably develop outside the city limits.
I can tell you, over the 10 years that I've been here, the, the commercials continue to grow steadily and our tenants continue, we probably have, I know Commissioner Bushnell can probably say, "I think we probably have a really low vacancy rate within the city limit for buildings, commercial retail buildings." They're pretty much all full. And they seem to, as soon as they empty out, another one moves right back in. We do just continuous tenant permits of where there are changeovers. I don't think that's actually-
But that wouldn't change the landscape plan for the-
Well, the borough doesn't, you have to remember, the borough doesn't have zoning either.
Yeah.
So you, but the, but Anchorage does, and we're much less stringent than Anchorage.
Oh, I understand.
Almer has a landscape code too. I'm not sure how it is. I didn't compare it. Um, but the borough doesn't have anything. I will tell you that most businesses want to locate in the cities that have zoning because they have protection from code enforcement. They know what use it can and can't go next to them. They know that the others are gonna have to do that. They have access to water and sewer. They have police protection. There are a lot of pluses that draw them to our city versus the borough. And it, it, it doesn't mean it won't become a problem in the future, but I haven't seen it today.
No, I just, I, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, no, it's a great question. I just wanted to share that with you, that we have seen continuous growth. I think statistics I gave you the other day, wasn't it, over the last 10 years, we had 750,000 square feet of new commercial built in the city?
Yeah, what you're seeing is we're, and we had this discussion in the last meeting, the difference for the city, whether or not the city, city wants retail, commercial versus other types of commercial. I will speak differently because I'm a commercial realtor. I wanna see all commercial and, and not, and not get dictated that I, I can't. But what you're seeing is you are seeing the larger players, the, the more industrial-type users, less retail, are moving out of the city. To, because, but, because they need larger land and it's just not available in the city. So there's, there's, there's a couple of reasons why people aren't building in the city. Some tenants don't mind sales tax. Others, um, know they're gonna get in trouble because they just, they don't know how to take care of it. And so you have, it, business in the valley, commercial business in the valley is, you have the very sophisticated, and you have the mom and pops that don't know nothing. And there's a lot more of the mom and pops that don't know nothing than there are of these guys up here. And we just, I just, for me, i- it's a matter of making sure that we don't, because I looked at that 5,000-foot building and I'm looking at, who's gonna build that? That's not the people that have, that's not shops at Sun Mountain that have a lot of money and, and big bucks to go into it. That's, that's the mom and pops that are trying to stretch to build a commercial business that may not be able to do everything. And, and if it's too much, and that's relevant, um, they're going to try to take shortcuts. And so if we can eliminate the, and give them options, a lower cost option of something that would work, that I think that would shore up our, our commercial.
And I think that's one of the comments, again, um, like I said, I'm gonna reach out to other landscape architects too. It's just Corvus does a lot of the plans for the city. That just seems to be what's happening right now. Um, and so there's been a lot of conversations with them and them drafting the plans and what has to be done to comply with the code. But that's one of the things that is on the list to talk about is the perennials. Because I didn't realize the perennials cost as much as they do.
I got a $5,000 bump on an appraisal on a house because of the 11 perennial gardens that were on it. Unfortunately, three years later, the people that bought it had destroyed them and there wasn't a garden left on the property. But at the time, I did get the bump. And, because everybody said, "You're not gonna get the appraisal." And when I talked to the appraiser, I said, "Here's what it is, and this is what I did." I said, "Landscaping ain't cheap." And he goes, "You're right." And he gave it to me. So, I mean, but perennials are expense.
Yeah.
If you grow them from seed, they're not so bad, but if you wanna start at 24 inches.
And so that's some of the things that, looking at that, that balance of, do we have the right numbers? I think the street trees are good. It's one per 40 or 50 feet, so that's not that close. And that's, that creates that nice streetscape environment.
What, what about the types of trees? Because this is something that Anchorage has been going through in Eagle River. And they, they went with, "We want conifers and we want all these spruce-type trees." And the root systems are, are horrible, or they're, like some of the, I'll use the example, Chief Alex Park in Eagle River. They had to actually completely re-landscape that and take out a lot of the conifers because they spread too much and they became a visibility problem.
We don't require, we don't restrict the type of tree.
Okay.
We leave it up to the landowner to choose the type of tree that they want and the mix that they want.
Okay.
If it's a large site, then there's a mix. They can't just choose a single tree. But that's good for the health, because if, you know, like with the, if a black spruce beetle comes through and kills them all off, you don't wanna have all of one tree. Plus, it's just more interesting to the eye to have a variety. But we totally leave that up to the developer to choose what trees.
Okay. That's why we get a lot of apple trees in, in the presentations.
And then the other thing that came up for discussion was, right now, we have the trees, shrubs, and perennial flowers. And, but one thing that's come to light is it seems the only two, I'm not sure if that's all there is, and I don't think it's all there is, but it's all we see, are irises or day lilies. That's it. That's the only thing that's come across as the plans in the last three years. I think there are other perennials, but for whatever reason, I don't know if they're the cheapest-
Columbine, um, you got Columbine, you've got, you could put out, uh, and there's, there's a few other perennials that, but the, the native Alaskan perennials though are, are, sometimes sketchy. Sometimes, sometimes they, they stay where they're supposed to be and sometimes they don't. And sometimes they come back, and then they come back a couple of years later.
Well, one of the things that, um, that in conversations I've had people ask me, "What can I do flowering shrubs instead?" And why not? I mean, it gives you the pop of color that you want from the flower. And like a potentilla will bloom all summer if it's healthy. It'll start in June and go through August or September. So that's much better than a one bloom of a wild iris or, and then it's just grass blades there. There's also been some fern plants, you know, some different other type plantings that are not technically shrubs, but could be aesthetically pleasing in a planting bed. And so we wanna kinda look at opening up some different varieties and some different layouts. Um, right now, it's prescribed, you know, so many per linear feet. Um, and we're looking to identify a way to make sure that we don't have landscaping at this end of 200 feet and landscaping at this 200 feet with nothing in the middle. But does it really have to be evenly distributed along the 200 feet, or could it be in groupings? You know, could that be an option? You can either do this, the linear, or you can do these groupings as long as you have this much density every so many feet. And allow them to have that creativity to come up with a design. Because right now, what we have doesn't give a lot of crea, creativity options. And so that's some of the other things you'll see come in as suggestions and options.
Okay.
Which may be less expensive and easier to maintain, like I said, a flowering shrub versus perennials.
Do you guys have any questions? I mean, I'm speaking, but that's, you, this is community hall. We all, we all talk, so. I have my opinions, and I'll usually, if they're my opinions, I'll tell them you, it's my opinion. And you guys can-
No, I just, my concern with the landscaping is that we don't make it too erroneous for the, uh, for the, for the landowner.
Yeah, we don't want it to make it disproportionate to what they're putting, you know. Yeah, it should be what's needed to make it attractive and to make it a nice-looking business, but we don't wanna bankrupt them either.
No.
No, the economy's doing that.
We want, we want the economy to bring these businesses here. And hopefully, they generate enough money that they can, um, do these things to their, um, to their lots.
That's all that I had, unless you had anything else you wanted to add. Like I said, look at that. If there's anything, any comments that you get, feel free to share the word about, you know, that we're having these conversations and to talk to people about it. And you can send me the information. You can share it at the meeting.
I do have, I do have this, and, and this is just a, I, I don't have the answer to it. It's a question. So during the summer, Wasilla can be beautiful for two and a half months. So we spend all this money on our landscaping for two and a half months' worth of stuff. Are there, are there some other things that we should be looking at for them people? I mean, I, I underst, I was looking at the, the fences and, you know, I love the split rail that everybody's putting up because it's the cheapest fence they can do, and it, and it's, and in five years, they're toast. Um, somebody runs into it, they fall down. Um, Eagle River did it all up and down the street, and now they're paying for it. It's, it's the type of landscaping that you get to pay for over and over and over again. So are there, I, I assume that, I, I was reading it, and that was the first thing, I was like, "Oh, I don't like that." But then I realized, okay, I gotta think about it. I gotta think about the winter time. And we gotta think about what kind of, how do we make our, our parcels look, have some type of landscaping? Because once October hits, sometimes late September, all the leaves come off. Um, we could get snow in September, which is gonna kill all the flowers. And really, the perennials aren't coming out until the middle of May, in the middle of June. So we've got June, July, August, and partial September. Um, so a third of the year, and we're creating a huge, I, I know we, I know what we want. I understand that. But we need to find some options for Alaska to, to make our, our community beautiful. So if anybody has any ideas on that, that's, that's what I would be asking the architectural.
The two-thirds of the year that it's either covered with brown snow or, or drifted over, or- If we have one of our, uh, what used to be usual winters, uh, we're gonna have a ton of snow to get rid of. And you won't see but the top of the trees that have no leaves on them. So decorative walls, something that'll be more permanent.
Then those get expensive.
Yeah, then you're looking expensive too, so.
I think one of the things that people don't take advantage around here is the evergreen trees that we have. And I'm not talking the standard Christmas tree one. They're the more narrow ones.
The black spruce.
The Luther, not the ones that die off. There's another one, because the Lutheran church up on Bogart, just up here, um, has some more narrow ones. They stay more tapered down, and they're never green spruce. Um, some of the ones, once they start hitting 40 feet tall, then they get, they get wider at the bottom. But they're that, and then we have Mugo pines. I don't think that Target's parking lot is the best. What I think is interesting about it is they have a mix. They have the only willow tree, I think, or some variation of a willow tree in their, in one of their parking islands.
I think it's a weeping birch.
Or something. It looks like a weeping willow, but it's obviously not. It's something that can live-
It's a weeping birch, yeah.
Yeah. So there are things that are interesting even when they don't have foliage, just because they have something to them. Uh, the, the mountain ash with the red berries, which although they may hit the sidewalk and make a little bit of a mess, they give that pop of color all year round. So maybe we wanna look at requiring a minimum mix of inserting some plantings that are evergreens. There's Mugo pines that are shrub-
The mountain ash are the ones that I would, as a planner, I would give you a suggestion to never allow on a street.
You mean like downtown here in?
Yeah, because what happened, they grow and they get big. And they block sightlines really bad. Um, Jack White in Eagle River, um, where I managed, um, had, um, Jack White in Eagle River, where I managed, had mountain ash bracketing the driveway entrance. And, yeah, I mean, you've got to groom.
I was going to say, you can limb them up and...
You've got to limb them, but people don't typically, but people don't typically do that to trees. And so, they, so on a public street, on a visibility access, that would be just keep in your mind, that's not a good place for that tree.
Well, any tree is going to have to have that line of sight maintained. But yeah, I mean, I think there's some options, but if we don't prescribe them, and again, you can leave the creativity to them, but say that you must have a mix. We went with a light mix, meaning not all trees the same, but we could insert and 25% or 10% or 5% have to be evergreen or something, you know, something, or something that's got a visual structure to it so that, I mean, when we ice up, all the trees are beautiful when we have them out there in the shrubs, even though there's no greenery on them, they're pretty. When they have snow on them, they're pretty. But obviously, the ones with the denser skeleton is going to be a more attractive one in the winter time as far as giving something of interest. But yeah, all of those things are on the table to talk about.
Okay.
Certainly propose anything. And then we'll start, hopefully after next month's meeting, I'll have you a rough draft of a strike through an underline to start looking at. And then we'll keep going from there.
All right. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Then let's exit the, I need a motion to exit committee of the whole.
I motion, David Seals, I motion to exit committee of the whole.
Second.
All right. There's a motion to exit with the second. Any objections? Hearing none, we exit committee of the whole at 7:32. All right, moving on. All right, now we have elections of officers. We need to elect a chair and a vice chair for 2021. And the best way to elect somebody is when they're not here. Actually, can't elect somebody that's not here.
Otherwise, I vote for you.
I will accept that.
Proper process to, you need to nominate the, an individual for the chair and then there'll be, so you make a motion to nominate and then you'll need a second and then take votes. And then you repeat for vice chair.
David Seals, I make a motion that Eric Bushnell be chair.
Melvin Saydel, second.
Accept. So, we'll have to vote on that. Any objections? Hearing none, passes. All right, so now we need to elect a co-chair.
I was going to say, really against the rules to nominate someone?
Not really, not really. But she'd kill us if we did that to her.
Who's that?
She's the second most senior.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm actually, I would like to propose that we, I would move that Rubio be the co-chair just because of experience.
Vice chair.
Vice chair, vice chair.
I agree.
Okay, the second?
Second.
All right. Any objections to Rubio being the vice chair?
No.
Hearing none, it's approved. All right. So, we're done with election, we're done with that unfinished business. There's no unfinished business. There's communications in the package. Did you see the stuff from the borough? Okay. The permit log, enforcement log, et cetera. And there's no audience to make comments. So, then we will open it up to staff members for comments.
You don't have anything yet?
No, sir.
Don't be quiet now. All right. Do any of the commission members have any comments at this time?
No.
I have none.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank each of you for volunteering and being part of the commission. You're going to find that it can be very rewarding and it can be very frustrating. If you're going to resign, you got to find your own replacement. So, just understand. All right. So, hearing no other, hearing there's no other business before this commission, this